Victor, they're not live on LMC either.
Okay, I just wonder if I was on the ball or not. Okay, Sally, thank you for letting me know.
You're welcome.
Good life. Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Village of America Board of Trustees work session for July 11th, 2022. I need a motion to open the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Your motion to adopt the agenda.
I think. Is Victor on?
Yes.
I'm here.
Adopt the agenda, but I'm going to go to the executive session.
I think we should. I think we should do the 2A in the beginning of the work session.
2A is the village requirements, trustee village requirement. I think it would be helpful so that we clear any issues at the beginning of the meeting.
You said we've done an executive session. And I wanted to vice the council to do it.
Well, then we can do the three. But I think at the beginning of the meeting, everything should be cleared. So just to make everything running smoothly. I also read just recently, I saw something about one law missing, being missing. I don't know if you want to add that.
But that law was not on our last work session.
But in our last work session, we said, and this will be for the regular meeting, not for the work session. In our last work session, we decided to have it and the other two on the regular session to schedule public hearings.
But you can't schedule a public hearing on a law that's not in front of you.
Yeah, it's in front of us now. And it should have been in front of us now. And I actually sent it, I circulated it because another mistake happened.
On, well, two weeks ago. Well, we don't have it in front of us, so we can't move.
No.
I think at one point you actually said.
No, I made a motion to do it and everybody and you didn't, you actually agreed before I made the motion. And Victor and Dan agreed to do this for next, to put it on the work session. I mean, let's reflect that.
Okay, so you want to put a work law on a work session that hasn't been on the agenda?
Actually, it was on our agenda from November through January.
Okay, so it wasn't on your, it wasn't our agenda that you moved in.
It was supposed to be. And it just.
It wasn't supposed to. You never asked for it.
I did, a series of times. I mean, I can go through the emails and show you. So Bob had drafted it in November. It was on November through January. In January, we moved it to be on our February 14th work session, at which point it wasn't on the February 14th work session. And we made the determination to put it on later. And I've been asking, asking, and asking, and I finally redid it with this year's date.
What we've been waiting on, Nora, is termination from the board of elections, which you decided not to wait for anymore.
No, I think we should, this is, we're doing what Bob had suggested we do in February, at our February 14th work session.
Make the motions you want to make.
This is not this agenda, unless you want to add it to this agenda and talk about it. I mean, staff has the backup, it just hasn't gone on. So want to make a motion to add it to this agenda? Or do what we said last week, which was they were all going to be on the February, the July 11th regular session for scheduling a public hearing on July 25th. And two of them are on, and one isn't.
Do you want to move it to this agenda or not, Nora? That's the key. So that it's, so that it's not, I think it's in an email, but I don't know if it's in the backup.
It's not in any backup. It didn't get put in any backup. I sent it twice today. Didn't get put in.
To have it on, to have it in the agenda, you would need to add it as an item.
It's not on the work session agenda. We had decided two weeks ago to put it on the regular session agenda for scheduling a public hearing. I mean, if we want to add it to this work session agenda, we can do that too. But it would need to be in the beginning. It was item one on the work session agenda from two weeks ago, but didn't get, again, the backup wasn't put on. So it was on the agenda with no backup two weeks ago.
I don't remember it being on the agenda two weeks ago. I remember the other two laws being.
It was item, it was.
I don't remember. Make your motions. Time to fly.
I mean, Victor, do you have a preference?
Dan.
Anybody have a preference? Do you have it on both or just the regular work session as we had decided two weeks ago? The regular agenda, right, right, the regular, you decide.
I don't know that we would have much in the way of discussion before we discussed it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we discussed it.
So maybe.
Okay, I moved that we put it on the regular work session agenda with the other two, and we put it in the order it was, which would be, it would be before the other two.
This is the.
This is the. They can, trustee, they can.
Okay, suppose anyone?
I do not see him on. Let me see if he's in. He is, one second. We promote him.
It would be.
4B1.
It would be for A1, actually, because we, I mean, if we, I don't care.
Okay.
For A1 or for B1, it doesn't really matter. The order in which it appeared two weeks ago was before the other two. Just without the backup. And I think it would be great if the staff could put the backup on it. I sent it today. I don't know if it's as good as what Bob did, but it's using his as a template. Okay, I make a motion that we put it on the regular meeting agenda as item four.
You added, I'll do it yet. Just make a motion.
That we put it on the regular meeting agenda under new business, and it would be to schedule a public hearing for the 25th, and that the staff adds the backup to the online agenda.
What's for, what for what?
Well, either for A1 or for B1.
For A1, that's fine.
She needs a second, second.
Okay, Victor, just, Victor, are you comfortable with what the, or? What was on?
There's a motion and I'm, I'm good to vote on it. So. Motion and a second, right?
Call the roll.
I think it moves.
Trustee Young?
No, because I think it has no chance of ever coming along.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes, let's discuss it.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Okay. We have somebody waiting in executive session. Make a motion.
So with that, are we adopting now the agenda? Would that change the agenda for now?
What is your change?
There was no change, other than.
Asking what the change is.
Was no change, other than the agreement to discuss 2A, I believe, early on, so that we can clarify any issues.
Okay, my problem with that is, is that today you asked me to not put something on the backup, because you wanted to speak about it in executive session. And out of courtesy, I didn't put it on the backup. And I said in the email, I'll regret this. And now I regret.
That's about backup. So let's, I just want to make this work, Mayor. So, so.
Trustee Tofor.
If not, leave it at the end. That's fine. That's fine. I want to make this work.
This.
Then let's adopt the agenda as this. Let's say, I don't want, I want to make this work. No problem.
I asked for vice accounts about this. I'm going to ask for a vice counsel when we're in a vice account.
Then if necessary to clarify, when we come back, we can, we can discuss that so that everything is clear for everybody.
I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. Well.
Call the roll.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Okay. Somebody has the executive session in front of them?
Yeah.
Could you make the motion?
I can, but I don't think it's complete. So I have a question for Bob. Is what we're, is this incentive program, I guess from, oh, Bob's here. Hi, Bob. Hi, Mark. Is the incentive program appropriate for 1051F?
Do not have.
That exemption, that's number one. And then we have to add performance review.
Okay.
Okay, we have to add that.
Want to share mine? I'll write notes on it. 1051D.
Maybe.
Doesn't matter, just to be to say. It's an exception that are required.
So here's a question. Is, is it appropriate to discuss the proposed incentive program under 1051S?
Is it a matter of collective bargaining?
Yes.
Then it's appropriate.
Okay, so, thank you. So to discuss the incentive program under 101, 105.1F of the New York State Public Meetings Law and performance review, particular person 1051B under the New York State Open Meetings Law. And.
Okay. Norm, the motion, I'll second. Will be pleased.
Trustee is young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
Okay, let's see an executive session. LMC, could you put up the sign and just?
Um. How you doing, Og? I'm gonna give you as much time as you need, Oggy. You can promote me to panelist tonight, will you?
The elder change roles of panelists.
It's minus pounds, I'm hitting that right? And nothing's happening.
The elder change role, are you hitting okay?
I think I could double click, because the next thing. Try it again. Double click.
Say it won't promote you.
When I go out and come back in.
That's a good idea. The mayor.
All right, I don't need this for right now, we can do it later.
So Bob is not in the meeting.
Bob is on the meeting.
He just emailed saying, oh, here he is. He wants a panelist. Bob is. Bob is in the meeting.
I'm here now.
This isn't a lot of, you can fix this for me later, Oggy.
Sure.
Okay, uh. It's time for a couple items. Uh. I'm trying to figure out what's on. Will we work a regular now?
I agree with work session.
Holy Christ. All right. I had one A, we're gonna hold. It was so. Is the tree committee gonna look at that?
Yeah, the tree committee wants to talk to Bob, so I can hold that to August.
Well, that's all, that's all right, so.
Like the. Bob has explained to us that there is no, nothing in the law that requires the village to issue or deny an application for a free permit after it's filed, and I think that that's, there's an expectation if you file an application for a permit and you pay the fee, that it either is approved or denied. That doesn't sit in limbo.
I'll put that on the list. Right?
Just send an email to that effect, so that we all have it. That's a valid point, actually. Okay, review chapter thirty-six of Village Code indemnification in defense. I put this back on, and the reason I put it back on is because when we talked about it before, we talked about it in terms of, well, after we adopt the changes to the ethics law. But it's pretty apparent to me that we're not gonna adopt changes to the ethics law anytime soon. And for me, you know, this is a chilling effect. You know, you really can't in good conscience ask the ethics board to look at something if, you know, you can't control the costs. You know, and especially as an elected official where you have to pay those bills. You know, if you can't in any way, you know, ameliorate or, you know, control those costs, and it, to me, it's unconscionable that we could allow, you know, bills to be racked up without any, you know, control on our part. And to have someone have caught blanch. And. So I would like to say that, you know, if you hire a village, you know, if you have to defend yourself, you know, the, the going rate should be what we're paying the village attorney for litigation with some factor thereof. But to just leave it open-ended like this, especially when, it's obvious we're not amending the ethics law. So that, you know, that has sailed.
Do I say something?
Yeah, sure.
I think it's, I don't know why it's obvious we're not, I don't, I don't know why it's obvious that we're not amended. Oh, I don't, I don't know why it's obvious that we're not amending the ethics code, because I think it's something that we need to do. But I also think that on the flip side of it, we're gonna have a lot of people on boards and commissions who don't wanna serve, because you could have, if you, if we don't provide indemnification for people who could be charged with an ethics violation, then a deep-pocketed or not so deep-pocketed developer could file a lawsuit against somebody on an ethics board. If they, if they're, file a loss, file a complaint against the ethics board, or against someone with the ethics board. And that person's choice would be to either resign from planning board or the zoning board, or pay out of pocket to defend, so I think we have an obligation, we talked about this, to review the ethics code, and let's put that on our agenda for September.
There's gotta be a limit, though. Hold on, hold on, hold on. I had no time ever said that we should not identify. I never said that. What I said is that we should control the costs. And right now, there's no control. And quite frankly, we had somebody run up a hundred and forty-three thousand dollar bill.
I, you know, I think we have said that we're gonna, we're gonna revise the ethics code, we put this off until we did it.
Well, we had the ethics, we had the ad hoc committee in here.
Yeah, but we haven't pursued it. I think there, I think it's just, it got dropped, I don't know why it got dropped. I, I think there are many of their suggestions that were appropriate to adopt, and we just, we, we had them do all this work and we haven't followed up.
I, I wasn't here the night they presented, so I didn't see anybody put it on the agenda. And I don't know why no one put it on the agenda. You were the liaison to them.
I was the liaison to them simply because I needed someone to facilitate meetings, I didn't, I had no.
If you want to change the ethics code, why does changing the ethics code only come up when I wanna fix the indemnification? It seems to me like, you know, this is something that keeps something from happening.
No, I don't think that's the case at all, Tom. I think we have to have, we had decided that night that we were gonna have a special work session to do it, and we haven't done that, so let's put that, let's put that on the agenda.
So right now, there's no limit? There's no limit at all. No limit at all. You could hire, you could hire an attorney for a thousand dollars an hour. So. I mean, I've seen freezing, I mean, I, I don't think you can, you can, I don't think you can have that. I don't, I don't think the controllers almost would love that, to know that we have absolutely no control over its place.
Let's, and let's, let's proceed, and let's, let's.
What, I don't understand why they're. Especially in this litigious, happy village. Why one step has to happen for another step? I don't understand that.
Because we talked about this, you know, now we're trying it again.
I'm trying again, but nothing's happened.
Well, because we decided not to do it previously, it was you and Kelly that wanted to do it. We decided not to do it, now we're bringing it up again, this is, you know, we're.
I'm bringing it up here because there's been no progress.
Well, let's make progress on the ethics.
And frankly, there have been, I've had thoughts of, oh, I'd like to, you know, maybe I should, then I think, I can't do that. This is gonna cost the village God knows how much money. And it has a chilling effect on ethics when you can't refer something to the ethics board because you're afraid that it's gonna be a hundred thousand dollar bill to the village.
I, I have to say that I have never thought about. I'm, I don't know what you wanna refer to the ethics.
I didn't, so it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it's a moot point, but you couldn't, you know, in good conscience unless you were sure. And even then, you know, it could end up costing the village God knows how much money. And, you know, we sit here, we argue about, you know, you know, fifty dollars here and a hundred dollars there, but, you know, there's no.
Well, we should have at least a control cap in place that we can adjust later. I mean, can, can we ask, Bob, what's a, what's a reasonable cap on this kind of a thing?
Well, I mean, I'm not, that's not a legal issue, that's a policy issue.
I know, but you're in the business.
I, I would, what I was going to say was the rate that the village attorney charges for litigation, but that's way too low, so I'm not sure that's appropriate.
You know, this may be a topic that we should be discussing, but it's, we have a bunch of things that are on for tonight. And we're gonna have a ten more minute executive session, I mean, work session.
Well, you could, you could.
I don't know, I'm just saying, where you said, I mean, you wanna end it in ten minutes.
No, I said twenty minutes ago, I want that in twenty minutes, but, okay, this is something that is not gonna make any progress here. So we'll just, we'll just wait. Well, if you, if you. If it's made to December, I'll vote for something. Yeah, but it.
I mean.
But there is backup, you know, there's, there's. I'll take it off the agenda until, I'll take, no, no, I'm taking it off, it's mine, I'm taking it off the agenda until next year. All right, on for flashing pedestrian crossing signs. On for July twenty-fifth.
We've been looking at various options to manage pedestrian safety at various locations. We identified some intersections and crosswalks that could be benefited by having flashing pedestrian signage, I think we showed some of that to you in prior work sessions. I think they were, I think the intersections that were highlighted through Redmond, Redberry, and Brook. I think they were. Federal Road, Prospect, where we just did the improvements. Fenimore Road and Stanley by the playground. North Berry at Jefferson by the firehouse, and the Jefferson Avenue playground. Blair and Spencer, Blair and Palmer, you know, we have some. They're both so wide there that the, it's hard to eliminate those crosswalks.
These are walk signs or speed signs?
There are, they're pedestrian actuated signs, so if there she wants to cross, they press a button, and flashing lights on the, the sign will make the borders aware that there are pedestrians.
These are marked crosswalks.
Correct.
Yeah. And if this is, this is what's been proven to, or at least the data suggests works better than stop signs or.
Well, I mean, yes, I agree, so, and I mean, my.
Yeah.
So common, because known about stop signs.
People's, people's speed from stop signs. I just wanna talk about stop signs for one second, you know, I work at the Bronx Veterans Hospital, and their stop signs are ringed with LEDs.
Yeah.
And even during the day, the LED flashes. And it just, you know, because sometimes you get so used to a stop sign that it becomes almost invisible.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, you can't miss this, because, you know, the LEDs are constantly flashed.
And plain shadows.
What's that?
White plain shadows.
Yeah, like plain shadows, yeah. That was.
It's for when there's repeated traffic lights.
Yeah.
It'll grab your attention.
Yes, yes.
And the crosswalks, the, do not cross, it chirps like a bird for the blind.
So we're getting input here from one of our fine detectives, who is well-versed in.
What needs a crosswalk?
Yeah, I can, I can totally talk to our traffic engineers, see if there are certain intersections or, you know, stop signs that may benefit something, something like that, or I can pick up, you know, two or three pretty easily, like the one on Fenimore as you go under the railroad bridge.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
And what about, what's the story with North Berry, I know you were waiting for.
Well, I mean, there's been a request to.
For the stop signs.
For a stop sign at North Berry and Vermaat. There's never, there's not been official recommendation for the chapter safety.
But, okay.
And the chapter safety commission makes an recommendation.
We'll. We're talking tomorrow.
Does the traffic commission opine on these as well?
I talked to them briefly about this. I mentioned that I thought it's a better solution for North Berry and Brooklyn, a stop sign. I don't know if there was agreement on that, but I think these are, you do tend to see these in more heavily.
We have three bids, one bid is, is not a full bid. We have two that are relatively competitive.
Correct.
The difference between the two seems to be the solar cell.
That's correct.
Okay. What, what have any other municipality, either of these two?
I mean, they're, they're, they're in use all over the place, I can, I can ask for a specific customer.
Is the less expensive bid because it has a smaller cell, it's sold itself?
Oh, shit.
Have they been proven to be ineffective or is effective as the larger one? That's the question.
I give.
For other municipalities.
Yeah, I think the other, the other consideration is that one of them was on, was on contract, which allows to purchase it directly as opposed to having to put together a.
And, and I think the traffic commission's issue is not so much that they would prefer a stop sign, but that they want something there sooner rather than later, because we keep getting complaints from folks in the area.
All right, so everybody's fine putting that on for the twenty-fifth. Well, I'd like the information, you know. The information will be there on the twenty-fifth, I mean, there's gotta be consensus, there's always more information that can be got.
Part of this was, this has been on a work session for several months now, I went to.
Yeah.
Can I get some traction, because I, I don't know if those quotes are still valid.
Yes, I gotta, I gotta move on. Hurricane Azias and Ida after action capital purchase recommendations. Jerry, you wanna talk about that?
One minute. So there's a, there'll be a. All of the departments have submitted what they believe they need to respond to emergencies within the village, and this is a separate capital item. I hesitate to bring it to the board because our initial capital item, capital sheet is now three years old, and there's still no movement on any of that except for dribs and drabs, so I'm very concerned about the fact that the department heads have done all the work to inform the board that there are items that need to be purchased for the response of emergencies like we get here in the village. So what I think would be best is if I declare an emergency, give you a list, give you a total, then you just vote on the number on the twenty, on the twenty-fifth.
But we'll, why don't we have a discussion about this and see if we come to a consensus now?
Well, okay, if you can come to a consensus, God bless you.
I mean, this, I don't think you can just. I mean, this, I, I don't think you can just declare an emergency, I mean, I think that's. You know, that's, I mean, there, what is the emergency? If, if there isn't an emergency now, this is something that's for emergency planning in the future, but I think.
The emergency, the emergency would be that these department heads have all worked very hard to identify all these items that we do not have. Which makes us unprepared for an emergency in the future.
Right, but the, and I'm not disagreeing with that, Jerry, but I'm just saying. We have parameters for declaring an emergency and I don't think this complies with. One of the provisions that is required for declaring an emergency.
As long as you vote, as long as you vote on the number for the emergency that I bring to you. Then, um. I would be authorized to purchase those items. And it's not a lot of money, I mean, it's, it's, you know, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, give or take, so.
It's not, and this is what you want, this is what we're approving, we're not approving a hundred and forty thousand dollars in a different list, we're approving this list, correct?
These items, these, these, these items are what's, what's important, um, for. Now, this is the hundred and forty thousand dollars, right? So, so these items here help us get to where we need to be. Um, to handle and add to what we have already.
Okay, okay, let, let me get to the list, time is waning, right? So let, let's just get to the list itself and look at what Jerry's talking about buying. Uh, purchase of response trailer, thirty thousand dollars. Jerry, just quickly, what's a response trailer?
Uh, to house all the equipment that we're purchasing, so that we can move it around the village.
Okay, so, okay, gotcha. Trash pump hose kit. Just explain what that is.
A trash pump is basically pumps, it's a two inch pump for water and mud.
Okay. Uh, what, what's the, that and a trash water pump, which is next?
Right, so the trash, the trash water pump is smaller.
Okay. Insulated waders, those are the pants that you use. Uh, non insulated waders, those are for the, uh. Cold blooded, uh, waders. Chainsaw, sleeping cuts, is that for, uh, workers? Staff, staff who have to spend an inordinate amount of time here. Five portable generators. That's an obvious one, portable light towers, I know that they came in handy during, uh, two thousand and seven.
Yep.
What is temporary lighting?
Uh, string lights.
Okay, the, the portable light towers, are those powered off generators?
The portable light towers are powered off generators, yes.
And the generators can then be used for other purposes?
Yeah, but they would mostly be for lights.
Okay. And the eight kilowatt generator, what, what is that specifically for? Is that for the regatta?
No, the, uh, those kinds of generators are for, um. Uh, the regatta, we need a hundred and fifty kilowatt, and I don't have a price on that yet. The eight kilowatt is for areas where we can't use, um, gasoline inside.
Gotcha. And there are, uh. Various descriptions of the items throughout. With pictures, does anybody have any questions or concerns?
Um, so, I have two, where would we put the trailer, or we store the trailer?
In, in one of our yards.
Okay, and, um, is this the full list or is there gonna be another list?
There'll be more as we get pricing.
So what's the total budget? I mean, what's projected total budget for what we might need for emergencies, you know, to be ready for the next emergency?
Well, it depends on whether we can get life rescue boats or not. If we can get life rescue boats, uh, we'll be adding those next time, but we're still researching whether we can get them or not.
Those are the flat bottom boats that we need to, uh, rescue people when they are trapped?
Yep.
So.
Fire Department has an extensive list that we need to, uh, we need to put together and, and do some more work on, but this would. Get us started, get these, um, orders in, and then as I continue to get more. Pricing, then we would be able to bring that to you.
And this is all gonna be funded through the reserve fund?
It's a capital item.
Right, but.
Future, future debt, future debt.
Okay, so again, we need to sort of figure out as we, as we, as we continue to spend. Where we get to the point where the future, where we're limiting ourselves and what we can borrow in the future. Because we have the, you know, we have the I and I, we have the things we have to do. And we have the things we should do like this, and then we have the things we want to do.
Right, so the I and I would come out of a different fund, the I and I will come directly from the sewer users. Uh, stuff like this would come out of, uh, the village, the village fund. And I think our cap is, I think our, our borrowing cap is significant. Uh, but if you want a running total of the, uh, items that, uh, the board has committed to purchasing. Uh, with, uh, you know, with, with bonding, uh, we could provide you that.
Because I, thank you, and I think to your previous point, we really need to nail down what, what we're gonna do with the capital budget. You did, you all did all that work and we need to actually set the priorities and figure out what we're gonna fund. I think that's something that this board should do.
On, on, that, that's a good point, but on, on this, is everybody okay for putting that on for the July twenty fifth meeting? I'm okay with it.
And it, it's a hundred and forty or a hundred and sixty thousand?
Hundred and thirty seven.
Yes.
Lou? Right, we're putting this on for the next week?
Yes, yes.
Anybody else, any objections? Hearing none. Uh, new business that's gonna be on for tonight is the C-Mom program for village sanitary sewers. Jerry?
Okay. So we have worked very hard on a C-Mom program. Um, I know that, um, we have probably one of the best ones that will ever be created. Um, I would like to submit it to, um. I would like to have our attorney submit it to, uh, the Save the Sound lawyers as is. Um, I understand that they may have some comments and they may want to have some changes, but. Frankly, that's the C-Mom program that we can live with and that we can, um. And that we can implement here in the village. And more than that is too arduous and too difficult.
May I say something here important? Uh, I believe at some point, and Bob, correct, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, you and the village manager. Um, consider that because the C-Mom is so related to the litigation. I've been refused from the litigation, I have not participated in that too. So I think nothing has changed, if that's the case, then I'll, I'll just. Go out or you call me back in or whatever you want to do, but I, I can't participate in this. So let me just mute myself, or if you want, I can go out and back, what should I do?
Victor, this will be the last item that we handled tonight, so why don't you just come back for the regular meeting?
What? That was, was gonna ask, this is, was the C-Mom on the, on the meeting, on the agenda, because I didn't see it.
Yeah, why does it say it's on for regular meeting?
It's where?
It's right in, in the new business, it says.
It's not on the, what's available online, naturally, there was another sensitive issue.
Because there was a question whether it's gonna be on, uh, you know, we're discussing it. Uh, I think, do you, have you seen a copy of the C-Mom?
No, it says on for July, I thought it was gonna be presented tonight, on, on for July eleventh, twenty twenty, regular meeting, it says on Monday.
I mean, we don't have any backup. I love, on the.
There's.
Bring it back when we have the backup.
So, so let me ask then if I don't have to. If I don't, are we done with this item?
I think so.
Sensitive matter, the video conferencing, or not just village, but everybody? This wasn't, isn't that, or I, I'm of another agenda?
That's time sensitive.
It's time sensitive and we're at, you know, it's ten to eight.
Well. I think we could do it quickly.
Yeah, it's, it's a great law, I, 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 I like it actually, the way it's, it's done, thank you, Bob.
I, Augie, Ellie and I have been to several of the conferences, Bob wrote the law, I think it solves. What we need to do and we should put it on for a public hearing.
Yep.
I mean, just the advice is that, that's, that we can continue to, um. We can continue to have individuals meet remotely, but, um. There have to be three people in a public, in a publicly accepted.
What are, what are the conditions for people who are meeting remotely, because it said it had to be, uh.
Well, so we would, there have to be.
Extraordinary circumstances.
There have to be three people. Who are in a location such as this or other locations where the public can meet. And then somebody can, but, but what, what they're saying is we should, that it's smart to adopt this law so that we're. In compliance with the revised open meetings law.
Okay, right, right off the, work related responsibilities is very open then, I would say temporary work related responsibilities.
I believe this is, Bob used. That might have, Bob might have added that, we can say temporary, temporary work related responsibilities, I mean, we've had lots of people.
Yeah, but it, it has, it has to be, it has to be a temporary.
I, I, I think the main thing is that you need a physical call.
Which we need anyway.
Yeah.
Which we need anyway. This just gives us more flexibility and I think it's smart to do it. Because if, you know, if the, if this law isn't, if the open meetings law that, if we don't, there isn't an extension at the end of the week. And for some reason, um. Series of us, you know, a series of people have COVID, there's another emergency and we can't use teletra. I think it gives us the flexibility to comply with open meetings law, and I think we should do it.
Now, it gives the, the, the ability to, to let people do it, but does it require us to let people do it? Or, or can we just say now and I put it?
Well, we could, I mean, right now, right now, the law is that someone absent the. Emergency provisions, someone who want, a board member who wants to tell, to teleconference in can do so.
Only if you pass the law.
Well, now.
They can't do it unless we pass this law.
Now you can still do it, you just have to actually, so, yes, so I think. Let me finish, I think you'll be able to teleconference in as, as. Has been the case for many, many years, if you, if you, if you give the name of your location.
I, I don't think that that's true, I, I think that that was, uh. You, if you don't pass a law. Teleconferencing is not allowed, this, you have, let me finish, please. You have to pass this law, uh, to do it. That's why we, that's why we're passing the law.
Well, it's recommended that we pass the law, but.
It's recommended if you want to do any teleconferencing, you have to pass the law.
Well, it's recommended, but I think, I think both NICOM and the committee and open government don't agree. So I think we're smart to just pass the law so that we can at least.
But I'm just saying, it doesn't mean that we, we go back to the old way if we don't pass the law. If we don't pass the law, there's no telecom.
That's, there's a, there's a debate about that, Tom, there's a debate about that, you know, NICOM agrees with.
That was explained to me by, uh, Shelley May.
NICOM agrees with you.
What is, what is the law?
I think we want.
And I think the answer.
I'm not saying not to pass the law, I'm just directing, what, what, what?
So, I, I'm fine with doing it as long as we write in temporary work related responsibility.
I have a problem with the word temporary because, let me give you a scenario. I run an international consulting company.
Okay.
I'm going to be continuing to travel internationally. Okay, that's not a temporary situation. The meat, the question of whether or not that a particular meeting is, I'm gonna be away, that's the issue. That's the only, that's the only thing that, that, that part of the law refers to is, are you away on business for that meeting, period?
Right, but it, 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 what about if you, if you take a job in Malaysia? And you say I'm gonna be here for a year?
Then you're not here.
That, that, that's.
You'd have to define temporary. I would not vote for temporary. Anyway, I think we have a consensus that something.
Well, my question is, is there a consensus for temporary?
No, I think the, the law Bob drafted is fine, and I think we should just do it, it's been on our agenda for, I don't know, since February, I think. He drafted this. Well, this is make it.
Yeah.
But my only question is, it's make sure that we have the number, that, it's, it says proposed law E on the top. And it says proposed law D on the bottom. So just make sure we have the right numbering before it gets on the.
What number should it be?
I don't know.
I, I did notice there were two different numbers, Bob, what number should it be? Mark, can you answer that?
If, uh, it would be law H.
Okay.
Okay.
This has been carried from meeting to meeting there.
Yeah.
Was introduced.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I second that we put it on, I, I think it's a good draft.
So we.
Let's schedule it.
So we schedule a public hearing on July twenty fifth for August, whatever the meeting is.
Okay. All right, I'll deal with my concerns then. All right, uh, I need a motion to end the work session, so move. All in favor?
All right.
All right, we're gonna take a fifteen minute break. Meeting is ready to go. Love this kind of stuff. All right, I'm gonna start. Good evening and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good evening. I need a motion to open regular meeting of the Village of Merrick Board of Trustees for July eleventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have a couple of items to report out of executive session. In executive session, there were two votes taken. First vote was to approve the review of the village manager evaluation. The vote was three in favor. That being trustee two four, trustee Lucas and Mayor Murphy, one against trustee Natchez and one abstention. Trustee Young because we were reviewing year twenty twenty one and trustee Young was not on the board. And then we discussed an incentive program, a retirement incentive program for employees. And that was passed by a four to one vote with trustee Natchez voting in the negative. Okay, that housekeeping being done, I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
Some move.
Um, some move as, as we amended it in work session.
Right, well, I, we're adding an item in the work session, from the work session onto new business. Okay, uh, all in favor? Oh no, we called a roll, I'm sorry.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four? Um, Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Uh, trustee's for God, he's not on yet. First item on the agenda is a proclamation, some American library, because they were, they were voted and deserved. Best library in Westchester County. I'm gonna come to the mic up here. Jennifer, can you and a select group of your lovely employees join me at the mic while I read this for the public, for all of you?
Well, I want to thank you all for doing such a great job for the community. And for so many of us that are using, once you come around here so TV cameras can get the. The panorama of excellent places. Whereas the Village of Merrick since its establishment on November sixteenth eighteen ninety five has been blessed with public institutions. That met the diverse cultural, professional, educational and recreational needs of villagers residents. Whereas one such institution is the Merrick Public Library, established in nineteen twenty three, almost a hundred years old. And funded by local organizations, businesses and individuals responding to the slogan, Merrick is not a fit place to live, so it has a library. A truly impactful statement, allowed by its simplicity, whereas the Merrick Public Library moved to its current site. One thirty six Prospect Avenue, right next door, in nineteen twenty seven. It has, and, and as the community has grown, the libraries responded to both its expanding facility and services. And want us to meet community needs. And whereas the Merrick Public Library has never solely been a brick and mortar facility. Rather, it is an institution composed of intelligent and caring staff. Committed to instilling in the community a lifelong love of learning. Personal and professional development and fostering the imagination and curiosity of all ages by offering a myriad of programs. Whether it be from storytime programs for children to outreach services to homebound individuals and senior citizens. And whereas the quality of public and cultural institutions such as the Merrick Public Library is a driving factor. Why people choose to live and remain in the Village of Merrick. And whereas nearly a century, the Merrick Public Library has established a record of outstanding public service. And a true embodiment of the quote of the American writer Ann Herbert, libraries will get you through time, no money. Libraries will get you through time of no money, better than money, will get you through times of no libraries. And in recognition of their excellence. The Merrick Public Library is twenty twenty receipt of best Westchester award for best public library. I, Mayor Thomas A. Murphy, on behalf of the residents of the Village of Merrick. Hereby express the deep gratitude and esteem with which the public library and its staff is held by the community. Personally thank them for their community, for their century of service to the community. So thank you all for everything you've done for us and continue to do for us. Thank you, Deputy Manager Sarnoff. Whose mother, I believe, was a librarian who wrote this beautiful plaque. I, I'd like to take credit for it, but I don't really write that well. I should read more. This is an excellent tribute to all of you, thank you, all, all you do. You know, I, I, I've gone to the library for many years, I brought children to the library, to our, not a grandchildren. Wonderful institution, I've never seen any of you, you returning. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Thank you to the trustees. Thanks to Dan for that beautiful plaque that he wrote for us. Being named best library in Westchester is a huge honor in ordinary times. But in a year where our community faced a pandemic and an historic flood simultaneously, it's even more significant. My staff and our board are devoted to serving the Merrick. No public library in Westchester County, or in New York City for that matter, was open to the public more days than the Merrick Public Library. During this pandemic. Our role as center of the community was evident during both the pandemic and the flood. We provided not only books, DVDs, Chromebooks, ebooks and hotspots. But electricity, computers, running water and a relaxing place for people to sit, rest, recharge. And gather their thoughts. When the Community Resource Center and the Village Courts were displaced, we helped keep them both running. By providing temporary quarters which allowed them to continue to operate. Because of our ability to comfortably accommodate large groups of people, immediately after the flood. We invited FEMA to set up its headquarters at the library. Two thousand people who had been affected by the flood came to the library where they were assisted. While it was difficult to see our families, friends, neighbors and staff members suffering. We were glad that we could help provide the services that they needed. But the library is the center of the community every day, not just during times of crisis. For ninety nine years, our staff has been here to serve babies, toddlers, tweens and teens. College students, seniors, the homebound, entrepreneurs and everyone in between. These days, we also provide computer assistance, three D printing and a glimpse of the future through VR. We live our mission of connecting people with ideas and with each other in order to make the Merrick a better place to live. We help patrons not only by encouraging them to escape from difficult times with a good book or a DVD. But by providing them the tools they need to handle hardships and maneuver through misfortunes. In the almost two years that I've been leading the Merrick Public Library, we have focused on health and wellness. By adding titles to our collections, offering drum circles, yoga, qigong, meditation. Breathing techniques and mental health programs. breathing techniques, and mental health programs. In addition to such library standards as author talks, storytimes, book clubs, English as a Second Language discussion groups, and films, we strengthen the community. The library offers connections when people feel isolated and encourages people to de-stress, relax, and enjoy themselves. Weeks ago, with a donation from our friends group, we even filled a local park full of music and bubbles to the delight of everyone who attended. We had hundreds of children show up and they signed up for our summer reading program. We know that reading to children at an early age and encouraging them to read will help Merrick remain strong in the future. We also started Free Book Friday, where we give away books for free in the front of the library all day, so that cost is not a barrier to book ownership. There are lots of changes underway at the library and we are really excited. We believe that they will help us remain the best library in Westchester. To thank you for all of your support, we are having a big book giveaway at the library this Saturday, July sixteenth, from ten to four. All books are free and they'll be books for all ages, fiction and nonfiction. Again, that's this Saturday, July sixteenth, from ten to four, and all the books that you can carry are free because we really appreciate your support. We hope to see you there. Thanks for your time and attention.
Can't be any pennies? Remember, do all you, whoa. All righty, thank you very much, library folk. Good night, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item on the agenda is communication to the board, and just let me set the ground rules. It's a five-minute limit on communication to the board. That is for everyone. It's been that way since a couple of years now, so I will tell you, Orgy will tell you when your five-minute is up, and please just finish your thought and allow other people to speak. So, if anybody wants to speak about an item that might, that's of concern, please, avail yourself.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hi.
Members of the trustees, Land Tippit, five oh six Hill Street.
Quick one.
First one to compliment the village, I should have done it at the last meeting. We had a great teeth celebration here in the village. And going on, I think carnival was as, as good as I've seen it in years. Great turnout for the parade, the fireworks were spectacular. They were continual for twenty one minutes. There was no gap in between, and then I guess they had a few that didn't go off, so we had like a five-minute bonus at, at, at the end because they have to explode all the unused rockets. I once again want to address the board on having to deal with the capital budget. You have an operating budget, you have a capital budget that's bonded, and then you also have to address other capital needs that you're gonna have to come up with money for and pay for, even though they're capital items, trucks, firing, and such like that. When the water drains come out, you have to be aggressive with the water rate and sewer rate. You have two issues. Number one, right now, the budget is about three hundred and forty thousand dollars out of balance. Hundred and, hundred, one point eight million is because of expenses due to, to Ida that ran into the budget, and then you had a number of other budget items. So, right now on paper, your budget is out of whack, three hun, three million, three point four million dollars. You've also done an incredible amount of spending twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, not just on sewer, not just on water, but on items in the village. Some are reimbursed, some aren't reimbursed. So, you're gonna, you have two problems. One, how are you paying for everything that you have already approved, which is probably over six million dollars on vocal? Non-water, non-sewer. And the second one is, as the bills come in, are you gonna have money there? Or you may run into a cash flow problem at some point because you have four, four or five different projects that are gonna, that are gonna be billed for one to two million dollars. And at some point, if we're not up to bonding yet, the, the till runs dry. And then you have to go to BANS and you have to pay for them. So, this board seriously has to look at operating, capital budget that will be paid by funds, and then capital budget that is gonna be bonded, and where you want to go with each project. And raising parking fees, parking fines, because we make no money on the parking tickets with the cost of writing them. Marina, we lose money running the marina. In fact, we lose money on virtually every program we have, and you have to realistically go and look at what you're charging for every, every program in the village. And then if you're gonna do something new, like the dog park, what's the initial cost of the dog park? But then, you know, what is the maintenance cost of the dog park? A dog license isn't gonna do it. That's three thousand dollars a year. So, this board seriously, if you're gonna keep spending money, now you got another hundred and thirty seven thousand on the agenda for the next meeting for, you know, emergency, emergency storm response in the future, and that's overended because there's gonna be more coming in. So, that has to be looked at, taken in mind, and seriously, you have to look at the entire budget, not just the operating budget. Thank you.
Anyone else just for this one?
Good evening. I'm here to mark the third anniversary of a village harassment campaign aimed at damaging me financially and personally for my public participation in village affairs. The issue is simple. Village Code three forty two dash twenty one allows residential property owners to have up to two rumors of orders. I have exercised this right for decades, living on my second floor and using my third floor for a rumor. To further his personal vendetta, Mayor Murphy wants to deprive me of this modest rental income to drive me out of the village. Mayor Murphy improperly directed Village Merrick officials to investigate his baseless claim that I had an illegal apartment on my third floor. He abused his official powers, acted contrary to law, and in the process violated my civil rights. Here's what I have experienced. On July eighth, two thousand and nineteen, I received an unsigned notice of intent to inspect for a fire safety inspection. After forty years at the same address, I never had had such an inspection. Curiously, Village Manager Barbaria wanted to tag along with the fire inspector, presumably so he could spy for the mayor. Ultimately, village officials admitted they had no authority for such an inspection. It was just a sneaky attempt to bully me to gain unlawful entry to my home. About a month later, the village code enforcement officer appeared at my door saying that the village had received a complaint that I had a third-floor apartment. I asked for a copy of the complaint. Ten days later, I got a complaint signed by the code enforcement officer. Another sneaky attempt to enter my home unlawfully. The officer had never been inside my home and certainly had no basis to complain about an illegal apartment, particularly after my tenant had told her he had no stove. One business day after giving me the complaint, village police officers and building department officials appeared at my door with a criminal search warrant issued by a New Rochelle judge after Merrick Village justices declined to consider it. The warrant was blatantly unconstitutional. It specified no crime and identified no evidence to be seized. Village officials paraded through my home, picked up unopened mail, opened cabinets, and took pictures when the warrant did not authorize such activity. Building department officials entered despite the fact that the warrant granted access only to police officers. Nobody followed search warrant requirements of the fourth amendment. Based on the unconstitutional search, building department issued seven violations claiming that mine residents had two dwelling units. The zoning board upheld the original two thousand and nineteen violations in a split three-two vote, but later determined that I could cure them by using the same key for the second and third floor locks and putting both electric meters in my name. I did both, but the building inspector refuses to recognize the decision of the ZBA and says only he gets to determine the necessary actions to cure zoning defects, thus overriding the ZBA. So, the harassment continues. The village has sent building department officials to surveil my home, photograph my movements, falsely accused me of performing plumbing work without a permit, and sent me arraignment notices for violations I know nothing about. Mayor Murphy continues to attack me on Facebook and elsewhere claiming that it was somehow my fault that the village has spent seventy two thousand dollars for legal fees on this matter. That's like the mayor crashing his car into a building and blaming the building. I am the party trying to clear my name and restore my rights. The mayor continues to waste taxpayer dollars in further, furtherance of his personal grudge against me that could have easily been settled years ago. The record shows that despite my innocence, the Village of Merrick invaded my home, causing unnecessary conflict and costs. Mayor Murphy refuses to allow resolution, so legal costs will certainly rise. This board and every resident of the Village of Merrick should be appalled because they could be next if they become the target of the mayor. Thank you.
If the gentleman failed to identify himself.
I'm sorry?
You didn't identify yourself, everybody knows you.
Yeah, but I think for the record, you should identify yourself.
They gave that up a long time ago, Luke, here.
Sit down, you're five minutes. Thank you. I, I just want to point out that I've been accused just recently by Mr. Teager here of breaking the law. And my advice to him is if he thinks I broke the law, there are appropriate venues for that. It's called the District Attorney's Office. I will gladly walk there with him, and he can make those complaints, and we can have them adjudicated. But to, you know, to stand up there and say, you know, blatantly that I had anything to do with him is non-provable, non-true. And he fails to mention that the Supreme Court of New York State law has upheld his wrongful part.
And you should note that
And that, and that's appealed, so that the appeal doesn't mean right now.
You're in violation.
Mr. Teager, I'm sorry that you're upset, and I'm sorry that you think that everybody is focused on you, but that's not the case. You've had your five minutes, sir. I'm just addressing what you brought up. You don't have a chance to speak again. Thank you. Please sit down.
Um, Mayor.
Anybody else care to speak? Because Mr. Teager is done. Yes.
I wasn't planning, but since I'm here.
I think, I think people should be required to identify themselves before this meeting.
Some things never change. We're always accused of something when we sit in those seats. I did it for eight years, and I must say, there's no place I love more. And we've been everywhere in the world in this place. This is a remarkable community. And we take it for granted. We take our role for granted. We take so much for granted. This, this library, if I was, is the heart of this community. That, okay, I'm I'm saying nice things, okay. So, I'm happy to be finished with government. My, my twenty eight years up there, my eight years here comes to a number of thirty six, and in Jewish tradition, that is a very fine number. So, eighteen and thirty six are special numbers. So, okay. I hear, because, um, as many of you know, I have dogs all the time. And Hillary was telling me about the dog park, and I thought we really should have one in Merrick. It's, it's really a shame because sometimes friends invite me to the one in March month, or they invite me to the one in New Rochelle, and I feel, are we second class here? Why can't we get one here? So, I don't have to wait to be invited by someone who's a resident there, because you can't just walk in. So, that's my plea, if you could somehow, and, and, and ask for our help in, in creating the dog park. There are a lot of us that are dog owners that will probably be very anxious to assist you in, in funding this. And it isn't, I don't, can't imagine. I mean, we're going to be charged if we let our dog droppings not get picked up in the dog park. I mean, it's not, it needs fencing. I mean, I really don't see it to be a huge expense. As I said, I think a lot of people would be very willing to assist in funding this. I know your capital budget has to be enormous. I'm trying to take away some of the burden.
It, it's not a question of funding. We, we're going through the process of secret and
You're in secret now?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we're gonna fund.
And, uh, but that can take some time. I've done a lot of secrets.
And I would also say that the Ad-Hoc Dog Park Committee
Let me get closer.
But the Ad-Hoc Dog Park Committee is actually interested in exploring ways that they can get some private funding to help, so.
Excellent, yes.
We'll let you know.
Happy to do it.
Yep, I'm sure people will be too.
Thank you.
Be happy to receive. Yeah.
And, oh, I, I'd like to just say, uh, that we would want your help, I think, with, uh, the subsequent dog parks that I hope we will open in the years to come, because I think that we, uh, we've gone too long without anyone, and the first one is just the first one.
Okay, thank you. Very nice to hear, and so much here. It's a shame that we haven't had this. Some of them have had the ten, fifteen meetings.
It's, it seems odd, doesn't it?
I'd love to see us.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Anybody else public comment? All right. There were no public hearings tonight. It's gonna be order of the bills. Resolution authorizing budget transfers for over budget accounts. Uh, we have the resolution in front of us. Thirty six thousand dollars from legal services to engineering contract services. Three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two from auto repairs to fire department equipment. One thousand six hundred and seventeen dollars from parks building improvement to parks equipment. And the last being DPW seasonal labor, six hundred and fifty dollars to DPW contract services. Any questions or concerns?
What is the engineering? What's the overage for?
Say that again.
What is the overage for the engineering? I understand that what the transfer request is, okay, but there's no explanation. The others seem to be self-explanatory.
KRF session invoices.
That we already mentioned was various traffic safety
That we already mentioned was various traffic safety. Engineering projects that we use AKR for. And you know, among all the various uh engineering charges that we we.
This type of thing, particularly structural services, it would be nice if we could itemize it so we understand where what the issues are.
In the motion.
So moved.
Second please. Uh Augie please call roll. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez. Lucas.
Yes.
The four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi.
Uh resolution authorizing budget amendment for waterfront. Augie, uh you explain this to me. Could you explain it to the public where you're taking fifty thousand dollars from waterfront? And putting it into fund transfers, transfers to general fund.
Absolutely, Mayor. Annually, we budget fifty thousand transfer from the waterfront into the general fund while we're apparent current year's budget.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
While we're preparing the current year's budget, we budget the portion that's coming into general fund. But the portion coming out of general cat waterfront was not budgeted. In order to correct that, we're proposing a budget amendment to appropriate fifty thousand for waterfront fund balance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or concerns? No, okay. Motion.
So moved.
Please call Augie. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez.
Yes.
Lucas.
Yes.
The four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi, uh I'm not to backtrack a minute um and go back to public comment. Because a gentleman online had his hand up and I didn't see it online. So Bernie.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I I I missed you. I'm backtracking to get you.
Yeah, you have five minutes, though.
Good, I appreciate that. Uh Bernie, come on to nine oh four Raph Avenue. Um. I would like for the dam to be uh looked at as a flood control dam. Um as it is now, the proposal does not. Uh show that it's it's going to work as a flood control device for the for the Mamaroneck watershed. And I'm proposing that this should be added into the proposal of of the dam. Um, the second thing is, has anyone talked to David Zavenga from the county? The planning, uh the stormwater planning environmental guy. I was wondering if Jerry talked to him, if if you guys are talking to him. Uh because they seem to want to look at the Mamaroneck reservoir. And study this reservoir and see if they can do something and use it as flood control. Um and has anyone talked to Steve Otis for money? The state assemblyman on getting some funding. For the dam. Uh I know the county is responsible for the reservoir, but Mamaroneck has to be responsible for the dam. And just wondering if that's going on, if that's happening.
I could say that I am scheduled to talk to Steve this week. And that was one of the issues we were going to talk about. Steve and I usually talk once a month. Uh Jerry, do you know anything about the gentleman from the county?
Uh Dave Kavenga, we're we're talking right now about, actually, we spoke um by email. We just emailed today. To try to get the plans for uh the Ward Avenue Bridge um that we're working with the Army Corps uh project managers. We haven't had an onsite meeting. I did speak to to Dave. Uh I can't remember if it was a couple of weeks ago maybe, but we should have an onsite meeting with Dave. And some county people at the reservoir. It's a good idea. Uh but actively, Mayor, we haven't been uh we haven't been doing any of that. We've been doing other stuff with Dave.
Because I I spoke to Dave Zavenga and they were, he's they're able to do models of the reservoir now. Um back in in two thousand seven, when we first got flooded. There was problems with the computer models. They were slow, they crashed, you know, it was. So so the technology has advanced, you know, tremendously. And the county, it seems like they want to look at this reservoir as a flood control. And uh I don't think Mamaroneck should wait on this any longer. I think. You know, the old saying is strike while the iron is hot because when, you know, out of sight, out of mind. And then everyone says, well, we can't pay for it. We can't do this. We can't do that. Now, everyone wants to help us. Throughout the county and the state. So we need to act on this. This has to be uh urgent. I mean, you know, we can't, we can't sit on this anymore. We have to talk to Zavenga. We have to uh i- if Catherine Parker is there or she gets. Pushed up the Congresswoman or whatever she does, we need, we need to do this and it has to be urgent. The dam has to be rectified. It has to be used as a flood control system. For the Mamaroneck watershed to hold the water back. The water's coming from upriver and it's coming from the other municipalities. So the county has to do its part and fix this retaining system, which is the reservoir. And and let's look at this dam as looking at it as a flood control dam. Because the ACE project, although it's great for for the time being, it's not going to solve. The flooding problems of Mamaroneck. With a dam, a new dam that's higher and bigger and a reservoir that holds back much more water. And we are able to retain the water and hold the water back before it gets here. And the act, the new ACE project lets the water flow out to the sound. I mean, it's a recipe for success. So I mean, this dam has to be looked at as a as a a flood. Control system has to be. And this proposal, please, you have to look at it like that.
Okay, thank you, Bernie.
Thank you.
And and I'll report to you what I talk about with Mr. Otis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh all right, let's move on to where we were. Abstract twenty-two. Uh Mr. Fusco, will this be the last abstract from last year?
I'm hoping it all depends on the invoices that come in. Typically during year end, the orders look at sixty-day cutoff testing. We're currently within that sixty days. Uh however, we do look at the invoice that come in. If there's nothing material, within the next couple of weeks, this should be the last abstract.
Okay, thank you, sir. And this is fifty bucks, I'm sorry, five hundred sixty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and one cent. Uh any questions or concerns?
Yeah, I have one question on page six. AKRF, the bill is from December nineteen, December nineteen twenty. July of nineteen twenty-one. Forty-some-odd thousand dollars.
On page six.
Yeah.
Page six of seventeen. Why is it so late?
It's a forty thousand five hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents.
I think that's part of the the fourteen forty is traffic engineering.
Thirty-six thousand dollars?
Well, there are various projects that we have been working on, uh including.
Let me ask some questions, please. Go ahead.
Yeah, the various projects they've been working on, which include Prospect, Benhamore, Old Post Road. Oriented sidewalks.
What I'm asking is, these bills are exceedingly late. And it is more than most approaches to life, they would never be honored to be that late. You know, it's a year old. I'm not suggesting they didn't do work, but I'd like to know what this, I would prefer that when we get these, that they they be kindly and they be identified as to what. But thi- this is.
Well, if 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 you had asked originally, I'm sure they would have gotten you to back up. When we got the uh, you know, the abstract. You could have had it for tonight.
It's it's a larger question, not just what the breakdown is.
But you 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 know what it's for.
And you're old.
I understand. And you're you're saying we don't.
So there's my point, there's an issue of.
Trustee, you you said we we don't know what it's about and you could have rectified that. Okay.
I I think, you know, for considering a policy that if things are not done kindly and submitted timely, that. Can't be honored. I mean, this is. I'm not suggesting that's anything. Underhanded, I'm just suggesting that something is radically wrong, but.
That that policy would have to be, you know, reviewed for legality too. I don't know if the if, you know, if if municipality can uh, you know. Not pay bills because they're untimely.
The next bill is also um.
In all view, untimely.
Well, the next, the next, next AKRF bill also is from June two thousand twenty-one through this past May. Um and I know that when we had funded several things, we've been asked to not fund, but to approve several of these things. It that was in the budget for them, so um I think probably we do have to keep track and I'm a consultant. I I. If I don't build timely, I just. You lose your snooze, you don't get it.
Can we um can we get an explanation as to why these uh bills are so late?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just saying in the future, that's like if you would think that. We would have a more current accounting from AKRF. Obviously, the staff, if AKRF doesn't send a bill, the staff can't expect a bill. But maybe we can have a conversation so that we get them for in a more timely manner.
It's reasonable to uh to get explanations to why they didn't build properly.
It really is, especially since most people want their money before they do the work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Under that engineer, you know, with the total, I'm sure it's correct, but it'd be nice if we could have some documentation.
Anything else? Anybody else? So I want to make a motion. Mr. Teger, you want to say something?
Yes. I also saw that on the bills and I think the larger issue is, as I brought up many times before, that under the audit. The board is supposed to know what that forty-five thousand dollars is for and it sounds like. There's a kind of an idea, but not really. And there are, sorry, there are um alternatives for the board if it doesn't want to actually review the bills themselves. Um, page five, there's payment to me. For twenty-six seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. For appellate costs. And this is, you know, in the same vein as seventy thousand dollars spent. Um. Trying to evict me from my home. And the matter that was brought up by Ms. Goldstein at the last meeting about the excessive costs in. Going after her. And I just think the public should have some. Knowledge of what. This is all about. Um this was a lawsuit brought. Against the previous mayor and board. Um. Mayor Murphy, you're looking questioningly at it, at me. Um. And I was surprised to see you vote no on complying with court order to pay these fees. I'm not sure if, you know, you would have just ignored and gone against a court order if you'd been able to get two other votes for that. But it seems um rather disrespectful to the law. Um, you actually were in favor of this lawsuit before you were mayor. You wrote the two people who appealed. Don't drop your lawsuit. Amazing thing, I'm I'm sorry.
I'm I'm awestrung.
Clearly, um, the amazing thing is, is that. The mayor said the village has spent sixty thousand dollars on this lawsuit. Sixty thousand dollars. The only thing asked for in the lawsuit was a three hundred and five dollar filing fee. And for the board to get trainings, training, which is free in open meetings. Instead of doing that, you've spent sixty thousand dollars while you're on the couch.
Was I the mayor?
I'm sorry.
Was I the mayor? Because you're making it sound like I was the mayor and on the board.
No, you were the one who said it was sixty thousand dollars.
I wasn't on the board this one, right?
No, but you were on the board.
Just pointing it out, pointing out, you're 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 just acting like I did this. But but my my friend, what you do is you say things at the beginning.
Augie, please stop the car.
And and oh, I'll take care of it. Don't listen to this guy. What you do is you then morph into something else.
No, I didn't morph into anything, Tom. I started off saying this was against the previous mayor. And that you were in favor of it when he was mayor. When you were mayor, you were willing to spend sixty thousand dollars trying to get out of the. Complying with open meetings law. That's clearly what I said. I mean, I know it's embarrassing.
I'm not embarrassed. I don't completely.
No, I okay, you're not embarrassed. I understand. Um. And I just like to, you know, and I'm sure I won't give an answer, but you took a vote in executive session on an incentive program. Do you feel, does the board feel that that complied with open meetings law? I watched the first motion. I wasn't able to watch tonight, but last week and. You didn't even finish the motion, but the motion says to enter executive session for discussion. Of a contract, it has to be about a particular person or corporation. So. I'm not sure, we don't know what you voted on because you did it in executive session. Um. So my question is, was it for a particular employee? Or a particular corporation, or was it? A budgetary concern that's going to add to our bottom line?
I mean, I asked the question of what we were voting on and the lawyer said it was complied with open meetings law, so.
That's it? He just said, yes, it's all good to go?
He, I mean, he answered the question, saying it was.
Is Mr. Spalzino still on?
But I did, I I was curious when I asked.
It was appropriate for executive session.
Why? Was it about a particular person or a particular corporation?
It was in executive session, but we're not going to talk about it publicly.
Well.
Uh but that's that's some kind of circular.
Thank you.
We we had competent legal advice. We follow the competent legal advice. When when when. When you get a law degree and sit up here, I'll listen to your legal advice. Until then, you know, all you do is opine on things that are based upon your own opinion and based, let me finish. And and based upon your own work perspective. And frankly, your timing is up.
You complied with open meetings.
And our answer is yes.
You spent sixty thousand dollars avoiding getting training in open meetings law.
Thank you.
Am I incorrect?
Thank you.
Mayor? No, I'm not done.
No, you're done. Your time is up, please. Your time is up, please.
Augie, is my time up?
I'm looking. Sorry, yes, your time is up. You can check later on. Good night.
Time is up.
Well.
For some time.
Okay. Next item, I need, you know, I need a a motion to approve these bills.
So moved.
I'll second. For roll. Trustee is young.
Yes.
Natchez. Lucas.
Yes.
The four.
Yes.
Mayor Murphy.
Hi. Next item on the agenda is abstract. Twenty-three for this fiscal year. And. This abstract is for two million eight hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Questions or concerns from the board? Anyone else? The motion.
So moved.
Second.
For the roll. Trustee is. Trustee is Young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Sephora?
You're not taking a public comment on this?
I asked anyone else, the one got up.
I'm sorry.
Please sit down. You're, you're out of water. Please sit down.
You did not ask.
I did. I said, anyone.
No, you did not.
Mr. Tigger, please sit down. You're being disruptive. Please sit down. We're making a motion, we're having a vote.
Anybody else here in the mayor ask for public comment?
Yes.
Yes, he did. So sit down, please.
Yeah.
And please stop being disruptive.
Yeah.
Please call the roll. Trustee for four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I. Five minutes and break a little worry. All right. Uh, next up. The board wanted to add an item to the agenda, and they made a motion in work session to add the item. Uh, Nora, why don't you talk about it?
Um, so we have a couple of, um, we skipped a couple of things. We skipped all business.
There was no.
Yeah.
There is.
So I'm sorry. Much as I'd like to talk about this, we skipped Hillside Avenue Bridge.
This is so. All business, I'm sorry. Resolution, uh, old business, uh, resolution authorizing change order number four uh, for paving at Hillside Avenue Bridge. That's to be held. Resolution authorizing purchase of capital items needed for Hurricane Ida. Uh, that's not going to be held. That's on for tonight.
All right. Did we go over that?
We went over that.
It's off the twenty fifth. It's off the twenty fifth.
And the dog, uh, none of this old business can be done tonight.
Right, but I think we should, the dog park, um, I think we should say that we, it's been referred to the H C Z N.
Okay, why don't you sit up?
I just said it has been referred to the H C Z M. Um, we referred it last week in this, in the documents. Dan and I got the documents together and they went, they were delivered. So. Um, okay, so we have two, um, we had, um, we have, we have a referendum that, um, had, was inadvertently left off the agenda, and it is a referendum to schedule, it's a, it's a local law, it's to schedule a, a local law subject to permissive referent. For, to, um, ensure that when a trustee resigns, that the trustee is replaced by uh, by a vote of the remaining trustees, not simply the mayor. And, um, so we're scheduling a public, this is a resolution to schedule a public hearing, um, for two weeks from tonight to vote on whether or not we have, whether or not the entire board would, that would, would elect a replacement trustee and um, should the, should it pass, it would go to a referendum in November on the ballot.
Okay, uh, so that's item A one. I'm going to take that item first. We're going to call it A one and then A two, the second one. So we'll, we'll do the removal of the mayor's authority, uh, to appoint a replacement for a retired or a, uh, absent trustee. I'm going to do that first. Now, I want to point out that that authority is, it's already given to the mayor when he's elected under New York state law, under the New York state constitution. In almost every, in, in every village I checked, that's still the mayor's job. So there's three items on the agenda tonight to remove power from the mayor and to give that power to the, uh, rest of the board. Uh, I'm going to talk about it in this one instance, so I don't have to talk about it in the other two. There is no reason that I can see of why this needs to be done. It has been, uh, village law in this municipality, uh, since eighteen ninety five. Uh, it's been used many times. Uh, you know, I was appointed to board this way. Lou Young was appointed, Kelly Wentrop was appointed. Uh, Nick Allison was appointed. Uh, there, there have been a long line of, uh, good people that have been appointed by mayors and, uh, some were then elected by the electorate as Mr. Young was just in a, uh, in a primary, uh, and some lost in a election. And as I did when I was first, uh, appointed in two thousand and one. You could be in a position where a person resigns and is a two to two split on the board. You know, there, there, there are executive powers that the mayor has, that the New York state constitution has given him. What this board has tried to do, in my opinion, is to make the mayor just another trustee, the trustee who sits in the middle. And I believe very firmly that the village needs a mayor. Uh, I am not going to be mayor in perpetuity or, you know, even, you know, in, in that much longer, but I really do believe in the mayor's office, I, I've been through, uh, in this position, uh, some harrowing circumstances, uh, that I realize that the, the community needs someone and they turn to someone who can, you know, provide input and leadership. And it's not, it's not a, a, a whole board. They want to talk to one person. And that's, you know, I, I realized that was the case when I was a trustee and Mayor Trifiletta was mayor. And, you know, God knows, uh, Mayor Trifiletta and I didn't agree on everything, but I, I respected uh, his job as mayor, and I knew that it was a more difficult job than being a trustee. I realized that when I was a councilperson and I watched supervisor Selison. And, you know, so to, to make the person who's the chief elected official the same as everybody else is not what I believe our community wants. Now, I could say, you know what, let's just go to the election and, and feel pretty comfortable of, uh, coming out and winning the election. But I also have responsibility to the office. And the election is, is, you know, more of my personal opinion, but protecting the office for those who come after me i- is, is important, you know, and, uh, so to that end, I will tell you that if these laws are passed, uh, because you are in direct violation of village law and trying to have this election in November. You know, I, I'm going to question that in the courts. You know, you, you are passing this so that it is in, in in unison with the election law of, uh, New York state, but it's in direct conflict with the village law, which requires you, if you pass a permissive referendum, to have it either at your next election or within sixty days. Uh, if you pass this in August, you will not have sixty days until the November election. It'll be well over that. So, you know, we didn't put up a dog park and we didn't put up a fence because we wanted to make sure that we were following a lot of procedure. But we seem willing to make major constitutional changes to the way the village of Mariner operates without worrying about procedure and without worrying about form or without worrying about doing things properly. So, and I, I will say this, if, when I go to court, I am unsuccessful, I will not appeal. And we will then go to a referendum, but I think it's important to set a legal precedent that the, the law is followed, village law is followed, and that that is supported and the, the office of the mayor is supported. So that's really all I'm going to say about it. And you can, you know, you go about, you know, making your motions and, you know, we'll have votes here.
Yeah, yeah, please. Um, but I'll just tell everybody who's listening that this is never going to happen. We'll spend a lot of time on it, but it's not going to happen because there's no public support for it. And, um, it won't be passed if it gets on, uh, uh, the ballot in November. And I can absolutely tell you that the, uh, the people who are likely to be the next board don't support it either and, and would likely reverse it. So it's just an exercise in futility and wasted time. So, uh, uh, we can go ahead and do it, but we need to have a mayor who has some authority because this board, if this board has proven anything, it proves that it can't make a decision about a lot of things with five members. If somebody left, it would be only four. I mean, it's, it's a recipe for paralysis, and we've had too much of that. Seth?
So we're, we're here to set the dates, and the date will be, we, we're making a special meeting in, uh, July twenty fifth, uh, which used to be an A P meeting, but it, it, later on, it's going to be scheduled to be a special meeting to allow this to happen so that they can satisfy a timeline. And I can tell you right now, and, and it's not because of this, but I have a vacation planned, and I'm going to be away on July twenty fifth. So Lou, you'll, you'll have to do that.
Thank you so much. Such a pal.
Well, you know, I'm bringing you along slowly. Yeah. Uh, so you, you can.
I mean, it's not a special meeting. It's, it's a regularly scheduled meeting. We just usually have a shorter meeting.
It was supposed to be an A P meeting, which is minor items, minor items and the budget.
But we're doing this.
And this is not a minor.
Doing this, well, we're doing, we're doing this because our, our agenda got so backed up and it wasn't, the, the agenda wasn't properly prepared, and so we didn't have backup last week to, to go to schedule it for tonight. So that would be why.
What's the, what's the political reality is that it's not going to happen? Why, why?
I mean, you say the political reality is this is not going to happen.
My, my, my observation.
That's your prognosis.
Pretty good, like.
Um, I will say that, um, this, this is a new referendum relatively. It was, um, first on the agenda in November. But to, uh, you, uh, last year, we were supposed to have two referendums, the next two items that we'll be talking about. And they are, one was to harmonize the removal authority of zoning and planning board members. And so in two thousand sixteen, this village had a referendum to remove a power from the mayor and give it to the board of trustees. And that was the appointment authority for planning and zoning board members. When that, when that referendum was adopted, passed as a local law and then adopted in November, it, when it was drafted, they neglected to harmonize the removal power. So, so usually the appointing authority can, is also the removing authority. And obviously, when you appoint somebody, when you're removing somebody from the planning and zoning board, there's a more complicated um, process. It's not just something that someone can do easily. But, um, if if, if a mayor has the authority to remove a planning and zoning board member, what can happen is three other trustees could simply reappoint them. So that's one of the reasons why removal authority is typically harmonized with, um, appointing authority. And in terms of the clerk treasurer, um, and, and in terms, and, and in, in town, so village law is different in some cases from town law, and in town law is the entire board of trustees or entire board supervisors that would remove, but, but that would both appoint and remove the planning board members. Um, and that's also true of appointing a replacement, uh, trustee. And the appointment for, appointing the clerk treasurer again is something that, um, is done on a two-year on a, on a two-year basis in even years in village of Mariner. Um, and again, we had, it, we wanted to make sure that it was the entire board that appointed, not just, not just, um, not just the mayor, in part because, um, we have a clerk treasurer system, and so, um, it's in some communities, village clerk is, is an elected official, and our community is a planned official. But, um, for when that law was passed, it was supposed to be subject to this referendum, but that didn't happen. So actually, that, that law is on the books. It never, it, it, it wasn't adopted subject to permissive referendum. So we have, that's wrong in our disposition of law, us and in us, in our code. I looked at our code today. I, I looked at our code today. It was just done incorrectly. I didn't even, I didn't even email Bob. It just, our, it was supposed to be adopted subject to a permissive referendum, but that's not the way it got written in the disposition and in our code.
I'm sorry, but which, what was?
Clerk Treasurer.
That, that, that he would call both offices?
No, 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 that, that the law that we passed, having the board of trustees be appointing authority, was supposed to be subject to, to, to a referendum.
That's what we're doing here.
But it wasn't. They, no, I'm just saying, so it's on the books. There was a mistake in how it.
I'm just, I'm a little confused.
I, I was too.
Are you saying that the appointment authority of mayor to the clerk treasurer was supposed to be a permissive referendum?
It was supposed to be a mandatory, you know, because it's, it's removing a power from an election position.
What did it remove the power?
Yeah, because it was going from the.
What are you talking about? We're, we're talking about the appointment of clerk treasurer tonight.
I understand, but we had, in two, in, in November of twenty twenty, November of twenty twenty, we adopted a referendum to do just this, but it never got to the board. It turns out that it went on the books anyway. It was just a mistake. And so then in January of twenty twenty one, we adopted the referendum about the, um, the, the.
That's a scrip, I remember.
Okay, removal of planning and zoning board members. Um, both of those referendums were supposed to be delivered to the board of elections, but for whatever reason, they weren't last summer. So that's why we're in this case, why we're in this situation of having three public hearings, not just one. The other, and to explain Tom's point, um, village law, uh, in most cases, villages have elections in March. About, almost more than twenty years ago, the village of Mariner decided to move their elections to November, so more people would be able to vote. Um, but there is a conflict in, um, between election law and village law. And so in village law, if you adopt a referendum, that's subject, if you adopt a law that's subject to a referendum, you would time it to be within twenty, within sixty days of your village election. But we don't have that luxury because we don't run village elections. We don't have village elections. We have village elections in November that are run by the county. And the, under election law, the county for November elections requires information in ninety days. So there is basically as, it's a conflict that would actually prohibit any municipality from having a referendum. Any village, any, any village.
Any village that has a November election.
From having a referendum without having a special.
Mandatory.
That's the situation we're in.
No, it's not, it's not just mandatory, it's permissive too. And the reason this was actually discovered was because no one had thought about it. So five years, so five years ago, when we did this, it didn't seem to have been a problem, but it came up as a conflict when the, um, when the marijuana laws were passed a year ago, and you had the obligation that if you didn't, that if you wanted to opt out, when you opted out, the timing was such that it was, it was absolutely a conflict because if you opted out by the date the state required, and you were a village, you were going to have to hold a special election. So no one knew about it until then.
It seems to me, but right now, we're in a situation where we can't have a referendum.
Yeah, that, that's, that's why, so, so, but so why, so it's another reason to have to do this.
It's, you know what? It's unclear that, uh, li- listen, it's unclear as to whether or not it's unclear as to whether or not the courts will find whatever Tom wants. But I, from my perspective, I think the, the harmonizing of the planning and zoning board was a mistake that happened in two thousand sixteen at the lack of harmonizing, and it's something we have to fix. I think the entire board should be appointed the clerk treasurer, not, not simply the mayor. And I, um, and I think that, you know, in town law.
We're not a town.
I understand that we're not a town, but in some village, yeah, town, city law, it's cities, or it's all that charters. And, you know, villages are usually pretty small. I think it's more democratic to have the entire board of trustees um, appoint a replacement trustee. And I think frankly, and I don't really like saying this, but I'm going to say it. You have tried very, very hard to have two trustees resign so that you could place, so that you could appoint a replacement. You're doing it now with another trustee. And I think, and let me finish, Tom. And I think that it, it removes an incentive for anyone to try and increase their power by getting another elected official chosen.
You're, that's, first, first of all, I, I'm going to take, I'm bringing that.
Okay.
Uh, I, I have asked the trustee to resign because I didn't think the trustee was fulfilling his duty. And that is part of my job as the chair of the board. Uh, I have never appointed anyone or asked anyone to run for office who I thought wouldn't be their own person and wouldn't make their own decisions. And to allude to that is insulting to the people who, who have I appointed, I've appointed two. And, you know, Kelly and I were always in harmony with everything. Lou and I voted differently on things, and Lou and I don't agree on it. So to, to, to say that I'm doing it to increase my own power, it, it is an ad hominem attack that, that isn't supported by, you know, the actual history. And, uh, I'm surprised to hear you say it, but it, it is what it is. And all I'm trying to do is protect the office of the mayor, because I believe this village does not want five trustees. This village wants a mayor, and it wants a board that cooperates.
And it seems to me our first line of, of business should be to change the law to a. And it seems to me our first line of, of business should be to change the law to enable you to have a referendum before you have a referendum. I, I, so, so maybe that, maybe we should be working on that.
We disagree. So let's just move on and you can have your votes.
Cool.
No, you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on, uh, July 25th for P L E. P L L.
It's going to have to be.
I, it's going to have to be I. It's not, it's.
What, what, man makes suggestions to help you out here? Why don't you just talk about what you want to do? And then let them letter it later on.
So for, for, for a referendum to give the appointment authority of a, of a vacancy in a trustee term to the entire board of trustees.
And we're made the motion.
Can I ask, what, what number of law would that be?
We don't have a number.
We don't have a number because it's going to be a letter for right now and.
But what's the letter then?
Maybe I, the last one that they had earlier was H.
Let's just confirm.
Well, my, my, you know, my suggestion was just go by the name and let the, let the staff do the lettering, but you know, do what? But I do have work at 5:30. So let's just try and get done before that.
Victor, do you want to wait? Man, I think it's going to be, the previous was H, so I guess it's going to be I.
I don't know. I've lost track of the numbers, but I keeping that track.
Bob and Mark are keeping that track.
Let's, let's, let them put that on. Just add, with the number to be added by staff. So letter.
Letter. Be added by staff.
Mark, did you want to say something? So you'll let up there for me.
I, it would remain E and F.
No, no, no. This is the other one. This is, this is the, the one that we're adding.
I'm sorry. I apologize. It was. It was, if it's introduced tonight, it would be, it would be G.
How can it be G if we just had an H earlier?
Because that has not been introduced, that one was not introduced at a work session yet.
It hasn't been, because that's been set for public hearing.
Can we just, I mean.
Just for the sake of moving this.
If we have the letter wrong, will it matter is the question.
Can they, can they identify it by its function and you'd number it later?
Yes.
Letter it later, later.
The referendum for replacing of filling a vacancy in a term of trustee, giving the authority to the entire board of trustees.
She needs a second.
Org, trustees, Young? No. Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No.
Next, uh, resolution scheduling a public hearing, uh, proposed law amending the chapter nine of the code of the village of Amerenick. Authority of the mayor regarding the authority to appoint the clerk treasurer. Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Or trustees, Young?
No.
Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I. No, oh no, I'm sorry. No, no. Shot myself.
You just like saying I.
I just, I do, I do. It's, I, I, I wanted to be born in another generation.
Oh, and move on to next.
Want me to read it? Removal, removal authority of planning and zoning board members. It's actually scheduling a local law, scheduling a public hearing for, hold on, I'm just trying to find the correct letter. Public hearing for P L L.
That's what I'm saying.
Uh, P L L S on Monday, July 25th, two weeks from tonight.
Second.
Org, trustees, Young?
No.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I just want to say, one of the things, mistakes I've made as mayor was not removing the planning board member. I thought that the embarrassment of the ethics hearing would have been enough. But I should have remembered from classical literature and from Shakespeare, that great hubris has no appeasement. And so I thusly vote no. All right. Next up. We didn't just put this at work session. And, and I'll, I'll. There, there are things on here that are, that are not tweaks, they're major changes.
Where, where are we now?
We, we, we're not doing tweaking the Ace project because we didn't talk about it at work session.
Oh, yeah.
And that was.
And, and that, that, that resolution is, is, it's got some stuff in it that's, that's okay, but it's, it's just too, way too broad and.
And long. And also it's, it's, you know, definition of tweak should be, uh, if some of that stuff would definitely send a signal to the Army Corps that we want a new plan. And that would, this is a Trojan horse. And it, it would, it would allow another administration, another Congress, another Senate, another president to say, okay, let, let's give them a, a new study. And our grandchildren will be flooded before anything happens in this community. Okay, the next up. Shoot, it's on the agenda. And I'd like to make the motion that is before, for the board.
Okay.
Yeah, make a motion.
And everybody want a second? Where, where are we now?
He wants, he wants to make a motion about something we haven't discussed in work session. That is absolutely outrageous.
Yeah, I mean, we said we would do it in work session. So, I mean, while I'm, while I'm in favor of this, I think we have.
Let me just have some, just, are you in favor of, uh, saying that a tweak is redoing the busiest railroad bridge in America?
I'm, I am, I am, I am in favor of how, of having the Army Corps evaluate what they want to evaluate. And that's what this.
But they're not, they've evaluated that already.
Tom.
Let me finish. This, this is dangerous. This is absolutely dangerous.
In your opinion, I believe.
Please hear me out because it, it is dangerous to, to tell the Army Corps, hey, you know what? You know, they, they went through great lengths to say, you know, they can only work in the parameters of the plan. And the plan is an $88 million plan. They didn't include that bridge in because it ruined the one to, you know, the, the ratio that they needed.
And that ratio is significantly different now with the damage.
No, it's, it's about, it's, Nora. You're, you're taking a risk of losing the whole plan.
I don't.
Tom, I understand your position, but that is, in my opinion, totally inaccurate. Let me finish, please, sir.
Nora's the one talking, not me, pal.
But we didn't discuss it on the work session and it has to go on to the next agenda. That's, I mean, you know, we're trying to, you know, listen, every, we didn't discuss it on the work session. So it's for the, it's for the next agenda.
Maybe we, somebody should take another stab at that resolution before we do it.
Yeah, write it in English and, uh,
since everybody's commenting, I will comment, it's in perfect English. And if you look at the, the actual motion of the B of resolve, it's very specific. Not, it says, uh, without delaying or jeopardizing the existing funding of the plan to look at. It is asking, it is saying to the corps, look at this. Here's the big, the major problem. Everybody knows what the major constriction is. You know, for, for people who really.
I.
They have, they have no control.
I have the floor, please.
Go ahead.
Thank you. For people who are very concerned about flooding, they say, oh, well, we don't want to do this because it could jeopardize it. Is it totally a misstatement of fact? If, or the corps has been very clear that if the board of trustees wants to ask to look at something, they will look at it. They will decide whether it can be a tweak or not a tweak. And the resolution says very specifically, without delaying and without jeopardizing the funding. It's very clear about that.
Well, let me, let me tell you something. Congress changes next year. The Senate changes next year. Three years from now, the presidency changes. This will be a door that they can slam on us. And it'll be a door that we open. And that is never going to get done. And we know that. And it's just, it's just doing something for the sake of doing something without thinking about the consequences. We're trying to be strategic.
I'm thinking about the consequences and trying to be very strategic. We're going to spend $88 million, which is going to help reduce flooding between two and a half to five, uh, four and a half feet or four feet, depending on which, which part of the study you read. And you have, oh, you know, flooding that is over eight, you know, over 11 feet in this village. So please don't tell me that this is not going to be, that this could not be very significant. It could be very significant.
If you, if you, if you're interested in the MTA bridge, you know who you talk to?
Yeah.
The MTA, you don't talk to the Army Corps of Engineers?
I'm glad, I'm glad you understand it because I've already talked about what needs to be done. And this is what needs to be done.
Yeah. Goodbye.
This is reckless, isn't it? Okay. He made a motion. Somebody want to second it?
We're going to talk about it in two, it's, it's on.
Do you want a second?
I said we're going to talk about it in two weeks. I'm trying to, I, I.
There's no seconds, so it's dead.
It's not dead. It's on the agenda for two weeks from now. I'm really, you know, we're trying to fly with our procedures despite the fact that despite the fact that sometimes information isn't always provided, but we're working, we're doing the best we can. The stakes are made and we didn't get to it on the work session. So we'll get to it in two weeks. I think we should plow through our work sessions.
Yeah.
Well, you're not going to be here, but that's, I didn't know. Well, I'm sorry.
It's a special meeting to, really to change the mayor's powers. We had a special meeting.
It's, Tom, it could have been done earlier if.
Then you didn't do it, Nora.
I tried. You kept saying, you kept.
I never said anything. I never said anything.
We could have scheduled.
Stop, stop.
We could have scheduled.
It's not going to happen.
Between you and Kate are putting words in my mouth.
There's a hand up. Maybe we should, and I think it's the chair of the flood mitigation, A Gelber.
Mr. Gelber, go ahead.
Yeah, let's give him a dismal chance. Please.
Anthony. Orgy, can you let him speak?
Anthony Gelber?
Yeah, we'll get him.
That's probably him.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah, Tony.
Hi, good evening, mayor. Good evening, trustees. Village manager, Orgy, Bob. How's everybody tonight? So I'd like to put in a pitch for what I think is a tweak. And I know we, I definitely don't want to jeopardize the plan, but Kate and I put forth the kind of green, the, the green, you know, the green, the greenway versus the tunnel. And I think that that would help flooding. I think it will lower the cost of the project. And so I would like to have that considered as a tweak. And I think that's small enough that they, they, they would consider it and it would definitely, I don't think it would jeopardize the project. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if it didn't come up, that's what I would have suggested that we did, that we send along, uh, Tony and Kate's proposal with the village managers, have the village manager, uh, show it to the, the Army Corps and get, get their reaction to it. I think that is, is, is what we could do. Not, not start a whole, um, uh, project with a whole series of, uh, of, uh, suggestions about major changes.
Victor?
That's what I heard from them at the Emmeline was precisely that they are looking to maximize what they can do without, within their authority, within, within their plan, within, within what they think should, should get this moving forward. And at the same time improve those, those, uh, features. I'm not going to call them tweaks. I'm going to call them features that could have improved this. And I think it fits. They are the ones who ultimately will define what's a tweak or what is a feature, whatever they call it technically. But I think they are open to it. So the fact that we bring issues like the daylighting and maybe other issues to explore. I, I think it's open. Let's just craft it, uh, at the right time. But, 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 you know, this happened, uh, five years, six, five and a half years ago, when the project was being taken. And, and by just offering consensus. And it was Mr. Gelber at the, at the, at the, with the chair, chair of the flood mitigation, uh, it was possible. Let's, let's do it again.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Tony. Next time my agenda is accepting, was just a joint waterworks project wholesale custom metered volt number three. Everybody see the resolution in front of you? Questions or concerns? Okay, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Orgy.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I, uh, accepting Westchester joint waterworks product booster. Perchance boost the station related, uh, pressure reduction valve modification. Some questions or concerns? Make the motion.
Second.
Orgy.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I, uh, last one of Westchester joint waters, accepting Westchester joint waters product water infrastructure replacements related to 2022. Uh, plant paving in the village of America as a local capital project. What, what's just the joint waterworks does is it looks at each municipality's paving schedule and, uh, tries to, uh, schedule the improvements that need to be done in those areas when the municipality is paving so that we're not digging it up a year later on a freshly played street. It's actually a very short way of doing it. Questions or concerns?
No.
I'll make the motion. Second, Orgy.
Trustees, Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
I, uh, participation in short term was just a power extension contract for communities in the Kanaed service territory. What this is, is the village is choosing, uh, the green option, uh, for energy production, which makes us buy, uh, you know, renewable energy sources. Uh, and they said that they negotiate a price and that's what our customers get. If you don't like that price, you can opt out and go to the, the brown energy products, which is, is, uh, you know, coal and, uh, gas and oil, uh, which greatly contributes to greenhouse gases and global warming. The, the village has been a member of this for a number of years, has, has been a town. The village has been a member since 2016. Uh, so I need a motion to, uh.
Didn't they just announce that they were suspending it?
Yeah. Yeah, they did.
It did.
They did.
Yeah, I think what, what this is, is, um, they were.
Whoa, whoa, he's so, go ahead.
They were attempting to, uh, as part of the process to bid for the next contract, uh, establish a not to exceed price. The problem is with energy prices in the world today, they weren't getting bids, uh, that were complying with the uh, minimum or maximum, uh, energy unit, their energy price, which is, I think, 13.9 kilo, uh, cents per kilowatt hour.
Yeah.
I mean, everything is just way more than that. So this is removing that cap that they were trying to.
Got it. Understood.
Yeah, I was about to say, we, everybody in the village that notification that were opted out of the program. Is this opting us back in?
This is to. What this is doing is it's, you're opting out because they couldn't establish the price. This is for the successor. What this is doing is it's, they're opting out because they couldn't establish the price. This is for the successor. Agreement to get rid of the cap so that they they can actually award to a energy services.
Again, my my question would be, so is this going to have all the residents opting in with no cap? All the residents. There was never, I don't I don't know if there was always a cap. There wasn't always a cap. They they wanted to have a cap because of the spiraling price. This option, all the residents, residents can opt out. That's 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 my.
Residents will get a mail-in, where it's set up.
It's like a round two.
Round four, actually.
It's interesting. It says an extension of the Con Ed template, not the ESA template, at the very last page. Exhibit one is the extension of the Con Ed. ESA template. An extension is crossed off, and Con Ed has popped in.
We're right with Paris.
Just the very last line, very last page, very last. It's the agreement. And it's the exhibit. So it is a little bit confusing.
You might just be matching because it says consolidated.
Yeah, I I think Trust Lucas is right. It's right. It doesn't make any sense because that term is not defined. Up, when when the contract refers to the exhibit, it's it's very different, so. It has to be.
It's probably because this is the, the template is based on, because we're. This is Con Ed's territory, so it's probably harmonizing the language to be Con Ed. Requirements to establish the the ESA. It just says Con Ed ESA template. So Con Ed, since Con Ed is the regional provider.
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's not in agreement with Con Ed.
You know, because we're Con Ed's.
It's in, it's, you know, the date is June thirtieth, so we're in the new period already.
Yeah, but section two defines, I think there's a problem with the text. You see.
Why don't we have, why don't we approve the resolution, have the village attorney look at the.
But what if it's wrong? If we approve it, then we can get out.
Contingent on the village attorneys. We'll prove a contingent upon the village attorney's review.
Okay.
Review of what is exhibit one, you see, because here it says. But I think it's it's not a, it's not critical. It's just, it's probably just a bad term.
Okay. I'll make the motion. All roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. July twenty-fifth resolution revising July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two board meeting. Eight P M. My items only to work session and five P M. Regular meeting, including public hearing at eight P M.
So move.
Second.
Trustees Young?
No.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustees to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No, and for the record, I will not be here that night because of the. Vacation. Item four, resolution authorizing increase of funding for installation of multi-space meters.
What's the deal with this?
Just have additional, add some additional costs for fencing and installation because we will short staff some.
So future fences, do it? This is coming from the Parking Trust Fund?
That's correct.
And the parking, just for folks who don't know, the Parking Trust Fund is usually paid into by. Businesses that can't. Supply adequate parking in their. Property, on their property. So it's been put to good use and for its needed purpose. So I'll make the motion.
I have a question. On the on the multi-meters, I believe when you originally voted, didn't you vote for them for both sides of Boston Post Road? No. And the other one is, I see where they're set up on Boston Post Road, but it doesn't look like the. The machines in front of the joint waterworks are operating. I see the other machines are all operating. When you drive by, you can see the screen. But the two that are directly in front of the joint waterworks, I don't see either of those screens working. Okay, thank you. We know that this, everything is offered to them or not?
I I need to check. I mean, as far as the first part, the, what the board did was they harmonized. The parking rates on both sides of the street. We do already have meters in certain areas.
Yeah.
On the on the north side of West Boston Post Road. That's confusing enough.
The meters are supposed to be working.
Yeah, I I can verify it, right?
I need a motion. So move. Second, please. Cool.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez? Trustee Lucas?
No.
Trustee to four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing manual payments to village insurance policies, none pro-tunke. Or you want to explain this a little bit?
Absolutely, Mayor. We had various insurance policies. They came in in order not to pay a late fee. We paid them in advance with a manual check, and we're asking the board afterwards to approve those payments that were sent out. This was all done in avoidance to try to avoid getting a penalty on the insurance bills. And a lapse of coverage.
Yeah.
And that's the process we're supposed to. That's really it. So that's good.
So move.
Second.
Call.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing execution of budget transfer to find collapsed pipe on Willow Street. Jerry, want to talk about the pipe? What happened there?
Mike, you're muted. You're muted, but.
Sorry about that. At the end of Tony Street on Willow, there was a collapsed pipe that was causing an issue with the roadway. And we just didn't have the staff to be able to. Deal with the emergency right away, so we called in a contractor who had been working in the village.
Created a sinkhole?
Yep, big one.
All right. Any questions or concerns? We'll make the motion.
Second.
All roll, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez? Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next is donation of a swing bench at Harbor Island Park. Mrs. Phyllis Riley, donating a swing bench plaque to replace the Harbor Island Park. Loving memory of James Hudson Riley, US Army, the old God devoted husband, grandfather and dad. Thank you very much, Mrs. Riley. It's twenty-four hundred dollars. The new swings really look great. I think the Parks folks are doing that in-house, and they're doing an excellent job. So I would gladly make the motion and thank Mrs. Riley for remembering a loved one with that swing in the village.
Second. Ogie, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yeah.
Lucas?
Yes.
To four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Communication to the board.
Bonjour. Did we get the Building Back America payment for this year? Get nine thirty-seven? Yeah, you want?
Yeah, we we just received notice last week that we should be receiving it within two weeks. It's scheduled to come. Leave in July, but.
And the other one is we received two hundred thousand from FEMA for the twenty twenty-one storm.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty storm, what is it?
Two hundred thousand? No, seven hundred and thirty thousand.
We should be seven hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
And that was for the twenty twenty, well, the, yeah, twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty storm, S I S, twenty twenty-one. We recovered, Glenn, just want to let you know that we recovered over four hundred thousand more than what we spent. On S I S. I just need to let you know that because I'm going to be telling you the same thing in a couple of years. When we recover millions of dollars more than what we spent on Ida. So I just need to let you know that.
Sure, repair the last stage. When are we gonna do that presentation and when's that gonna go out to the? Addressing Village Wall? We need a new Village Wall.
I agree.
It has to be addressed. It should should have been addressed twenty years ago. It says we probably got eight different plans sitting, collecting dust from studies and everything over the years. It is time, time to to get it done. You have Holstead Avenue. I assume we're going to be having that presentation soon, that that. That was sent out with engineering. Seawall, they're working on now. I saw the first bill come in for that for engineering. Hunter Avenue Tier. That's the tier right across the street. That one, maybe you want to think outside of the box. Maybe you want to rebuild that tier and try to put affordable housing on top of it. And another tier to Hunter. And then put six, six, six stories of affordable housing. And try to put about eighty units of affordable housing is probably the best spot possibly in the village to do it. Near transportation, near Village Wall, near the beach.
Sure.
Downtown. So that is something that should definitely be brought up with Washingtonville and. The affordable housing, and that should really, really be looked at as. A viable alternative to build affordable housing in the village.
Pure genius, Glenn, pure genius. I agree.
The old firehouse, either we fix it and sell it or sell it as is. It it's getting to be like an old pair of shoes that are sitting in your closet for ten years. You know, whatever we want to do with it, we we know LMCT TV is not in the running to use it. It's an asset for the village. Maybe, maybe if you can sell that, you can use that as a down payment for the new Village Wall. You also, again, just have to go over your capital spending. The harbor master is looking to do another five hundred thousand dollars of repairs. You got a million dollar fire engine that the they're looking to order, which would take about twenty months. And then you got community grants, if they're accepted, each of them is two hundred thousand. You have four community grants. And then you're also looking at paving for sidewalks on Rushmore. And Old White Plains Road.
Yeah.
So you you have a lot of things coming up, and you're gonna have to start to build within your budget the fact that not everything can be bonded. That some of this is gonna have to be paid for either through raising fees, raising property tax. However you want to do it, but you gotta start looking looking at it now because you've, you're committed to six million dollars last year and two million dollars this year. Already, and you probably only have about three million of it covered with. And that doesn't include Hunter Avenue Bridge or the paving down in the harbor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One correction, we we have two fire trucks to replace. COVID issues, two point six million combined for the two fire trucks.
I stand corrected. So it's some raffles for the triotrans. Report from the village manager.
Mr. Glenn Tippett already gave the report, and I'll accept that. Thank you, Glenn.
What for clerk treasurer?
Can you give us an update on when we get the timeline for paving?
Oh, so Joint Water Works is working through their issues because they're trying to figure out where they need to do repairs. We gave them our paving list. They're looking at it to see. So we'll have paving probably, well, before December.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Report from clerk treasurer.
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
I need to ask you a question. It was mentioned before that our our village budget is blowing up. Is that the case?
I don't know what the reference was to.
Well, what, how do you feel our village budget is?
We're doing a thin budget right now.
With a thin budget? And revenues coming in?
Yes.
Okay, you feel comfortable where we are?
At any point, I don't feel comfortable. I immediately alert the village manager and then the board. Thank you.
Report from the village attorney?
Nothing from me tonight, Mayor.
Minutes, commissions, boards, committees. Minutes of the Board of Trustees Work Session, regular meeting of June twenty-seventh, and revives minutes of the work session of May twenty-third. Twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Arts Council Meeting of June sixth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Board of Ethics Meeting of June seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Minutes of the Board of Architecture Review Meeting of June seventh and June twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. Guess that brings us to the end. I wish everybody a happy summer. Stay safe and, you know, just enjoy your time with your families. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. A second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right, have a good evening.
Lou, you want to try the chair on for size for the next week?
What? I've sat in it before, believe me. It's not as thrilling as it looks. Bit of a target on it.